Good evening. Welcome to City Council meeting for February 22nd. Items listed on the agenda may be taken out of order. Two or more agenda items for consideration may be combined. And any item on the agenda may be removed, or related discussion may be delayed at any time. I'll call the meeting to order. The agenda has been properly posted. All members of council are present in chambers for the meeting. Is Pastor Ryan Carter available? If you could proceed with the invocation, please rise.
Father, we thank you so much for the privilege you've given us to be here tonight. Lord, we pray that you give our officials wisdom, Lord, as they seek to lead well in this community. Father, we thank you for our first responders in our community. I pray that you bless each of them, bless their families, Father. And, Lord, for the many families that you have drawn to our community, Father, we pray that you would just enrich their lives by being a part of this community here. And, Father, we pray for our teachers and our schools. And, Lord, we ask you, Father, that you would just lift up our people, that you protect us as we continue through this pandemic era. And, Lord, I pray that you would just give us all wisdom and a sound mind as we work through many issues here tonight, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Carter. We'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And thank you, Pastor Carter. Madam City Clerk, were there any public announcements?
No announcements.
Thank you. That brings us then to our first public comment period. As stated in the posted agenda for this meeting, public comment may have been submitted via written comments, via email. Members of the public may also call in when we open the phone line up. Public comment during this initial period is limited to matters for action on the agenda. Each person wishing to speak during public comment period will have up to five minutes. As always, we ask that you be civil and concise in your comments. Anyone in chambers?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Under NRS 241, are there any new documents that Council has received since the Agenda Packet on the item relating to the 16 acres?
All the handouts are available to the public.
I'm sorry, is there one on the 16 acres?
There is.
I didn't receive it, but I'll go ahead anyway. I'm concerned in here because of the item for the 16 acres being put onto the agenda. I read the agenda, and it isn't clear from it what the item is about. I find it vague. It doesn't identify specifically where it is, yet it calls out that it's 36.3 acres. My name is Neil Senaiken. I've been here for 37 years. And the reason that I live here is because of the growth control ordinance and the limited growth and sprawl to be away from that. My background is very heavily into commercial real estate acquisitions, market studies, site selection, analysis, syndications. I've dealt in property from $20 million to $50 million. My clients include Jerry Buss and Frank Mariani. They are aware, the owners of the Lakers, the Malaski families that built the Boulevard Mall, Park Plaza, much of Boulder City. I've worked for banks and different developers on various studies, and I feel qualified to speak on this. Also, I managed the Vaughan Center for 15 years very successfully, and I'm very aware of retail needs and finances and volumes and things that affect the shopping center. I'm concerned because I don't see any study. I didn't get a chance to read the material, but I did come because of the agenda item, and that wasn't really clear to me, and I didn't see these materials posted online. The thing that I'm worried about are, the Vaughan Center is eight acres. Joshua Plaza, where the Smith Center is, is about 10 acres. That's 18 acres. You're talking about putting onto the market, at whatever point you're going to do it, 36 more acres, that's twice as big as the Vaughan Center and Albertson's combined. We've had a falling out of Pizza Hut, the Alpaca Store, the Coffee Place, and several other businesses with a downturn. There's long-term vacancy at Marshall Plaza. Vaughan's has vacancy for about a year or two. Albertson Plaza has vacancy, and there are businesses that are basically struggling. If you want to add more retail on top of what's here, it isn't really reasonable. If you want to sell early, that would be a waste in terms of getting high value for that. 36 acres is totally ridiculous to me. It's my opinion. You're welcome to yours. In terms of putting in a second mall or market, there is a lot of buzz online. Some people are unhappy with Albertson's. There is a new manager called Ignacio. His name is Ignacio. The clock isn't working. You could talk to him, and he just came in to help. You can see what they can do. But when Albertson's came in, it put Vaughan's out of business. When Hagan's came in, they went out of business. When Albertson's Joshua Plaza opened, it has a very negative effect on the retail stores of the Vaughan Center. So I urge you to take that into account. I don't see any study that was done unless it's sitting on the back table. No traffic, no appraisal, no market study. I don't know who you've asked to come in, but I know Smith declined. I don't see Trader Joe moving here. Smith just opened on Warm Springs, put in a big store. It doesn't make sense to me that they would want to come. I don't know who else would come. Walmart? Do you want to put a Walmart in? I don't know who you're talking about. I'm concerned. When you say you're going to have CCNRs, conditions, covenants, and restrictions limiting it, well, those restrictions can be changed at any time by the City Council. So that protection that is waived out, or you believe, is non-existent if you could change the CCNRs at any time. I find it to be improper, unstudied, not even close to half-baked, putting in land that's twice as big as Albertson's and Vaughan's combined while there's vacancy. The rents in Vaughan's are the same as when I was there eight years ago. If you go look at Marshall Plaza, there's a tremendous vacancy. And if you go to the ICSC, that's International Council on Shopping Centers, the recommendation is 25,000 people per market. For us to reach 25,000 people at 500 a year, that won't be in my lifetime. At 500 a year in 10 years, that's only adding another 5,000 people unless this is an effort or a way of circumventing the growth control ordinance, and I certainly hope it's not. Because in order to support another market, we're going to need more people. Is that the end of the time? I saw you push a button.
Your five minutes is up, yes.
Well, I'll close with, when attempts were made to attack the growth control ordinance, I formed a political action committee with the mayor and several other people. We defeated question one. We've done other things. I don't see that the people in Boulder City, when they realize the scope of this, are going to support this, and I urge you to, I'll use the word, back off. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else present that would like to speak in the initial public comment period? All right, we will take anyone wishing to call in at this time. The phone number is 702-589-9629. Anyone wishing to call in for our initial public comment period? Madam City Clerk, were there any emails received for public comment?
No public comments were submitted.
All right, one more opportunity. Anybody present that would like to speak in public comment? All right, hearing no others, we will close the initial public comment period. We'll move to approval of the regular agenda. Madam City Clerk, any changes?
No changes.
Madam City Attorney?
Yes, Mayor and City Council. I would like to, I would request to remove subsection A on item five.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager?
No further changes.
Thank you. City Council, any changes for the regular agenda?
No changes.
I would move then for approval of the regular agenda with the item that Madam City Attorney requested to be removed.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Approval of the consent agenda. Madam City Clerk?
No changes.
Madam City Attorney?
No changes.
And Mr. City Manager?
No changes.
Council members, any changes for the consent agenda?
No changes.
Anyone wishing to make a motion?
I move to accept the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, we'll move to item number two, presentation of the Boulder City Museum and Historical Association's annual report. Mr. Tetter?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council members. Tonight, we will hear a presentation from the Boulder City Museum and Historical Association. That's an annual report that is obligated in their agreement with the city. So I'd like to invite Tiani Marie, the museum manager, to come on up and provide the presentation.
Prior to her coming up, I just need to say pursuant to NRS 281A.420, I would like to disclose that my fellow council members and to the, my fellow council members in the public, that I'm a board member on the Boulder City Museum and Historic Association. Though this item is only a presentation, the city does not confer benefit to the Boulder City, or does, sorry, does confer benefit to the Boulder City Museum and Historic Association by providing it with an annual funding grant. Because as a board member, I have an obligation to the organization's financial interest, I must advise the public of this relationship and disclose that I have a commitment in a private capacity to the organization. I've been advised by the city attorney that I am able to participate in this item.
Good evening. I'm actually John Calvert. I'm the chair for the Boulder City Museum and Historical Association, and we're here to present the, to present our annual report. General comments regarding the 2020 and 2021 fiscal year. Although our operations were affected by the pandemic, as were nearly everywhere, we did have several positive developments in our museum and its programs. First, we hosted more tours through the museum than we have, than we have since it moved into the hotel 20 years ago. Second, we began work on the rehabilitation of the Fenton House at 640 Avenue C. Third, we remained able to meet the needs of several researchers doing important work. Fourth, we have stepped up our efforts to digitize our archives through the MAP program of the American Association of State and Local History. And fifth, in mid-2021, we welcomed our volunteers back to resume processing and preserving our collections. We have previously submitted the following materials for the 2020-2021 fiscal year to the city. Number one, the 2020-21 Annual Meeting Report, the 2020-21 Financial Statements, the 2020-21 IRS 990 filing, the 2021 list of grants applied for and received, the 2022-23 Proposed Budget, and also the 2020-through-2024 Strategic Plan. Some of the list, list of some of the grants that we've applied for and received by the BCMHA in 2020-2021 fiscal year. City of Boulder City, $65,000, which goes towards museum programs. The Southern Nevada Water Authority, $9,456 towards water smart landscaping. The AASLH did not do a monetary donation, but they are digitizing, helping digitize collections. The SBA PPP of $72,452, which went towards COVID assistance. Railroad Pass donated $1,000 towards exhibit care. SDG&E, $2,000 for educational programs. And Google, which does not have a monetary value, but is for ads in the historic BC advertising. Grant opportunities were limited due to COVID. Some of our programs were suspended, school field trips, educational programs, and Thursdays, as were some grant opportunities. We submitted our complete financials and our IRS 990 forms to the city in October. They are also available at bcmuseum.org. You will see our, on our financial statements, that 100% of the city grant we receive goes to our museum, collections, and educational programs. The hotel earns a positive net income every year, and that net gain is used to help fund the museum and its programs. For the fiscal year 2020-2021, our operating income was down due to the pandemic. However, the hotel was still able to contribute net income from its operations to the museum. And now I will let Tiani talk about her museum stuff.
Good evening. I'm Tiani Marie. I am the manager of the museum and collections. I am just going to highlight a few of our things from the 2020-21 fiscal year regarding exhibits, educational programs. So with our permanent exhibit, we welcomed 69,285 visitors through the museum that year. Regularly hosted tours from Pink Jeep, Suite Tours, Las Vegas Tours, Comedy on Deck, Vegas Concierge Tours, Desert Vegas Tours, National Park Express, and more. We have a total of about 15 tour groups that actually come through Boulder City now. Our walking tour hosted 6,757 people using it for Walk BC, the self-guided audio walking tour. For our remote exhibits, we have remote exhibits in the Hoover Dam Lodge, the Boulder City Company Store, Railroad Pass Hotel and Casino, and future exhibits in process, such as the Hoover Dam, who is currently redoing their whole visitor center, and we are actually their artifacts and the information go-to right now. For special exhibit, exhibits, pardon me, we have items, construction workers fabricated using scraps from the Hoover Dam construction sites on display at the museum now. We had a Boulder Theater Pass exhibit for six months, Garden of Growth Boulder City, which highlighted the '30s all the way to the '60s. And our upcoming special exhibit inside the museum is going to be a personal collection exhibit on the Akissons. Our educational programs, we, for number one, we have CCSD school field trips for their summer enrichment program. We had 113 students attend. The regular school field trips were suspended due to the COVID, so CCSD did an enrichment program in June, and those are the students that came to us. We have 45 educational packets that were sent out for the 2020-2021 fiscal year for CCSD schools for remote learning. And we also sent out 20 additional packets to outside of Nevada states, all the way to East Coast, Midwest, and so forth. Other educational programs, such as our Third Thursday Lecture Series, were suspended due to COVID as well, and we hope to bring those back very soon. As far as research for the use of collections, so we had quite a few during the 2020-21 fiscal year. We had the NEH Summer Seminar with UNLV and UMass. So for two weeks, June 27th to July 9th, we had teachers and scholars using the collections to reflect and develop on three central themes that they would take back to their classrooms. Then we had Bureau of Rec, who continues to use our collections throughout the years. We have the Clark County Museum, History Channel, Boyd Productions, Northwind, and more. Digitizing, in late 2020, we were actually able to resume digitizing our collections. We migrated to a cloud-based software and have 1,992 that you can actually view currently now if you access our hub on our website. But you can actually keep coming back because we can switch them off and on. So one month, we will have, say, the photographers, and then we will have, like, Boulder City, Nevada, and we can change it off and on, so people have access to the whole collections. You're able to access that on either our educational page on our website or the main homepage on our website, and that is bchdmuseum.org. As far as our Fenton House for 640 Avenue C rehabilitation, we have began, we cleared all debris. We have a new roof that was officially installed, and we used a local contractor to do so. And the plan for 2022-2023 plan is to finish the whole exterior of the house. And as far as museum development programs go, we are currently completing Phase One of our MAP program through the American Association of State and Local History. That focuses us on practical, ethical, and strategic standards related to the care and management of our collections. It also guides us as we look closely at our resource operations and refine our future plans for our collections. This has also allowed us to begin working through the STEPS program, which is the Standards and Excellence Program for museums. And the program has three phases with a goal of completing to a fully digitized collection and going after AAM accreditation. And that is all I have for you.
Thank you.
Of course.
Questions or comments? Councilmember Jorgensen?
As I said before, I currently serve on the board, because that is a position that one of us needs to serve on. What a pleasant surprise for me. I've lived here for 23 years. I've kind of been inside a little bit, but to get in and see everything that's really there, it's amazing. The history that's inside of that building and that you're preserving, and I just say thank you because it's a vital part of our story. It's critical to basically why we're here. And you have a plethora of things down there that have been donated and that you've had the opportunity to give out, just like you said, to other exhibits, which I think is wonderful. When we outreach like that, then people are interested to come into our community and see what it's about. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Adam?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Talk to me a little bit about the rehabilitation of the Fenton House right now. Who are you working with? How is it that you're making sure that you're taking the right steps to make sure that the building is being preserved appropriately?
So basically, we have used full-on research from our collections for the rehabilitation. We are studying it constantly. It's a never-ending study process. We've used photographs. We use diary entries from descriptions that people have, you know, you know, basically described how it used to look, and we are making it as historically accurate as possible. So just basically, our collections is the hub for this.
Gotcha, gotcha. And then is there any, are there any advisors or outside contractors who are also assisting with that, with that process, or?
I know that we have. Who did the roofing? That's on my other paper. I know when it comes to the contracting for doing the rehabilitation, we are focusing a lot inside Boulder City, so that way we can just keep it local. The roofing was done locally. I don't know the title, sorry. But when it comes to historical information, we do have a lot of personal collections that we are using for that as well, but that's located in our collections as well.
Thank you. And then you also mentioned the digitizing of materials. You mentioned that they can be accessed.
Yes.
Online. Is that free for people to access?
It is completely free.
Great.
You can actually just click on the hub. It says BCMHA Collections Hub, and you just click it, and it takes you straight to our collection website with Catalog It. It's the software we use. And there, you'll be able to just scroll through the pictures. Alongside the pictures, you'll be able to see the dates, any notes, if it's an original photograph, if it's a negative, the accession number. So if you want a copy of it, you can just, like, email me and be like, hey, this is the session number. Can I have this photo? And it actually has helped a lot of people that are not able to fly or drive down to Boulder City right now, because we do have a lot of researchers that come from out of state, and this has helped them tremendously.
Excellent, excellent. And how much of that, of your collection, have you been able to digitize so far?
So.
Because I know it's a never-ending process because you're constantly collecting, but where are you at right now?
So right now, I can actually say that everything that used to be on PassPerfect, which was our old software, was officially 100% transferred, and now the process is actually just uploading new intake from our records.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I'm kind of a numbers geek. And I was looking at your 22-23 budget, and I noticed you have a deficit. Is that, do you have reserves? Or I'm looking at page one of one in the email from, a letter from Diane Pelletier, Finance Director, and I, are you planning, you have a specific budget amount of income, $775 in lower expenses, and the document budget proposal showed a net ordinary income of minus $76,000. I was wondering, are those current numbers? Is that projected loss? Is that, is that something that I should ask at a later time? I know, I just didn't know whether, I'm involved in nonprofits, and I was just curious.
Are you speaking to the 2020-21?
2023 budget, yes. BCMHA fiscal year 22-23 budget proposal. You had a budget template on one page that showed a net income, and then there was one that showed a net loss, and I was just curious.
I'd have to check with, check with the board on that.
Okay, no, I was just curious.
Sorry, you caught me off guard.
No, no, I could sit down with Diane. I'm just curious, the difference in the numbers, and I just know that at times you go under reserves, and also with the environment as it is right now, sometimes it's hard to determine numbers going forward.
Okay. I see a net income of $3,000. So I see a net income of $3,000, I'm sorry, at the very bottom?
I think she's talking about this one, the net ordinary.
Okay, so with the grant income, I'm sorry, I'm looking down at the bottom now. You have other income and expenses, so you have grant income, so that's not, okay, never mind. I'm not going to go further because I see where the problem is, my interpretation of the problem, because the grant numbers are below.
Oh, yes, okay.
So does it look like people, I'm going to ask you this. Oh, ask a positive question and ignore the fact that I wasn't looking at the whole thing. Are people coming back in? Are people coming back in? Are people coming back live?
Oh, goodness, yes. It's constantly a swarm right now in the hotel and museum. We've been completely booked since the beginning of February, and it's just constant now. And then as far as the museum goes, we have the 15 tours still going, which were actually continuously going during pandemic year, surprisingly. They were still coming out here continuously. And with the museum, so far this fiscal year, it's, we've already matched the 2020-2021 fiscal year number.
That's fantastic.
And we're not finished yet.
And you're not finished yet. So these are, these are good numbers for you for 2223, that year. No, that is good to see. I'd love to see the, our nonprofits in Boulder City do well and...
I'm going to go out on a limb and say I'm looking forward to presenting again next year with how successful this year has been.
Oh, that's wonderful. Yeah, it's, because it is a gem. Several years ago, I got a tour of the basement. And that was the cool, I could have spent days just going through all those files and the pictures and the newspaper articles and everything. You're lucky to have those jobs.
Well, we have space for more volunteers. Feel free to come down.
Yes, please do.
My husband won't let me volunteer anymore. I don't have any hours in the day, but thank you. I'll let you know.
Thank you. Anyone else?
You know, I grew up here in Boulder City, and the hotel has always been, you know, the anchor of the uptown area. The architecture, obviously, is a little different than most of the rest, but it's certainly iconic. The work that's been done to, you know, keep the building up. You know, the city had provided $300,000 many years ago towards the purchase of it, and this grant that's reflected from the city each year of $65,000 is also, I think, an effort to contribute towards the preservation that, you know, kind of defines Boulder City. And the history there at the hotel, I mean, you know, where do you want to start? You know, FDR, Carol Lombard, you know, any of that. The work that's being done with the digitization of the artifacts, obviously, there's not a huge amount of room there at the hotel because it is a hotel. I think that is really a project that is going to be of great benefit for people. So I, the, one question I have on financial aspects or reporting, you know, oftentimes nonprofits do list the salaries for their principal employees. That may be something to consider in the future. And then as far as your financial outlook, you know, you've just made the comment that next year you hope to have set a record. With that three-to-five-year range, how do you see that going? Because again, the city has been consistently providing grant money for the museum.
I wish I could answer that right on the spot. I appreciate the city's support of the museum, of course, and I would like to see it continuing, you know, indefinitely if possible, but on the same token, it would be, it would be phenomenal if we could be 100% self-supportive. Based on reports that we've been given on museum standards across the nation, that's very unlikely to be seen, but, you know, we're a very special town here. Boulder City breaks records all the time. I'd love to see us do that. So in which case, I would just be coming up here presenting how the museum's doing without having to worry about getting any money from you guys.
Thank you. And again, you know, crystal balls are nice, but they're usually not all that accurate. Just a couple of other things then, you know, Councilmember Adams had asked about resources that you might have for the restoration of the Fenton House. You know, please look to our City Preservation Committee. Also, there was recently an update of the Historic Register for the Historic District here in Boulder City. That also is a potential source of information on the architecture of that neighborhood and that type of thing. So again, you know, those are resources that I think are open and available and would hopefully provide some information to you. But again, thank you. Great job with the hotel. Love visiting it, you know. If I have people coming out here for lunch, you know, love to take them there, and they're always impressed.
I'll actually make a note on that. So we actually do work with Mooney constantly, so she's also a source of mine. I just have so many of them that I just constantly go back and forth with, and that is a majority of where a lot of our information comes from as well, because I'll send her specs and, you know, information, and then she'll send it back on whether or not it's good to go.
Yeah, and that, just for edification, that's Northwind Consulting, which the city has recently signed an agreement with. So yes, another great source of information. All right. Well, again, thank you very much, and great job with the property and the projects.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, guys.
Item number three for possible action, Consideration of Resolution 7402 Regarding the Residential Preservation Grant Program Guidelines. Mr. Tetter?
Yes, so Mr. Michael Mays, our Community Development Director, will be walking you through the new residential grant program that can provide some positivity to our historic residential properties.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. One of the goals in the 2025 Strategic Plan was specifically to identify financial incentives to promote historic preservation efforts in the community. City Council, as part of the fiscal year 22 budget, approved $100,000 to create a new grant program that focused on the residential properties within our historic district to incentivize property owners to look to make renovations that comply with the Secretary of Interior Standards and the guidelines contained within the historic district. With that direction, staff began drafting a grant guideline and requirements. We took that to the Historic Preservation Committee. Over several months, the committee provided feedback on what the guidelines should contain. And just to kind of highlight the main aspects of this grant program, again, this would only be for residential properties within our historic district, not commercial properties. It would provide for a grant up to $10,000 reimbursement at 50% reimbursement, and it would be for exterior work only. A couple other requirements would be that the improvements, all the improvements, not just those that they're seeking reimbursement for, for that project, would have to meet the Secretary of Interior Standards. Also, the applicants, the property owners of these residential properties, would need to enter into a 20-year agreement with the city to preserve the historical character of the property. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Councilmember Jorgensen?
I believe you answered this during our briefing on Monday, but that grant can be applied to both contributing and non-contributing as long as they're bringing it either back or closer to contributing. Is that how that works?
That is correct. So one of the other goals of the Historic Preservation Committee was to ensure that at the end of the project, either the home remains a contributing property to the historic district, or through the improvements, it would go from non-contributing to contributing. One of the, one of the objectives that came out of the 2020 Northwind Survey Update was the identification that over 50% of the properties within the historic district were no longer contributing to the district. And so through this grant program, that would help to preserve the remaining contributing properties or incentivize properties to become contributing.
Okay, and then these five bullet points are basically just a backbone for it or the entire process for the grant?
The five bullet points summarizes the main elements of the requirements, and so the guidelines are attached. It talks about what is eligible work and what is ineligible work. It talks about the obligations of the property owner. So if they're seeking those grant funds from the city, they would commit through an agreement with the city to follow through with those obligations.
Okay, so clearly, if they're seeking the grant and they read this, then to them, entering into a 20-year agreement to maintain the property's historical character, and we talked about this a little bit too, is such, that's with contributing and non-contributing, whoever asks for this grant, right? Would it be maintaining whatever changes, or would it be for the entire thing changed or not changed?
So what they would be committing to is by receiving up to the $10,000 reimbursement from the city, they're agreeing to maintain their property's historical character, that it must remain a contributing property to the historic district, and that if they want to make any changes, they would come back to the city and seek approval. If they're seeking any modifications from the prior commitment, they would have to go back through the review process, which includes review by staff and Historic Preservation Committee and the City Council.
And how would we follow through on that?
We would be monitoring all the projects that would receive grant funds. Obviously, one of the main ways that we monitor development activity within the community is through building permits, and so we would be monitoring any modifications to those residential structures.
Okay, and then if they did get that grant, we'd continue to monitor them for 20 years?
Correct.
Okay, and then what would be our, what would give us the teeth, I guess, to say that if they had changed it, that something could happen?
So there's a couple of provisions that would be contemplated within the agreement that if they were to make changes within a certain timeframe, typically, it's a five-year term. We have a provision that's called a clawback provision. So if someone does not fulfill their obligations, they would have to reimburse those funds back to the city based on a prorated rate. The other recourse would be potential denial of building permits and other property maintenance enforcement if they're not complying with the terms of the agreement.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I appreciate that. The fact, it looks like we set a good example with the commercial in terms of the categories and the descriptions and the way it was laid out. So if somebody else buys the house, that that's part of what they get to know about the house. So if the previous owner has received the funding for the work, does that transfer as part of a deed or title, or how are they notified that this is something they need, they are now responsible for?
That's a good question. Similar to our RDA grant program, when a property owner enters into an agreement with the city, that agreement is recorded against the property. So any subsequent owners would be aware of those obligations.
Okay, and so nonhistoric features, so they could do it just to simply remove something, remove, stuck up, remove something exterior.
Correct. In some cases, a non-contributing property could become contributing by removing that non-contributing element.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I'll just comment that I think this is the right approach for us to be taking. I think it helps to encourage us to start to come back to, you know, our status as a historic city. You know, I, yes, it will be a little bit steep maybe for some people, 20 years, but that's part of the agreement. It's also, I think, part of the encouragement that there is some, there will be consistency going forward, hopefully, so that as we see properties, hopefully, using this, this grant, we will start to then see improvement overall within our historic district and the, the contributing factor of it. So I think this is smart. It looks like we have also made some improvements from, coming from the commercial side from that RDA historic grant, and I think that we've looked at that in some areas that could have been shored up, and it looks like we are, we are doing that here. So I appreciate all the work that went into this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mays, again, I appreciate the work that was done on this. I had recommended of this program be included in our budget for this year, and I think the work that you've done, the Historic Preservation Committee, Northwind Consulting has been very good on this. The idea behind this is that we value historic preservation in this community and that it is something that makes this community better. Certainly, the amount of money that's involved here is far less than what we devote to our businesses. I think this is something we can take a look at. You know, I do have a little bit of a concern about the 20-year timeframe. You know, I think that's something we need to look at as to whether homeowners are willing to accept that amount of time. But it should be noted, we just heard from the hotel, and they have accepted grants in the past that actually have lifetime deed restrictions on that property for the grants that they've accepted. So these are not unusual, that there's a commitment from the owner that in exchange for assistance with the grant funding, they make that commitment back to the community as well. I did see, on page 44 of the packet under Section 3, second bullet point, it states funding is not available for rehabilitation work that is complete or begins before the time of applicants. I think that might be application or...
Yeah, we can certainly make that correction.
Again, I, I think that this is something that, you know, it's not unusual either. There are other communities across the country that do the same type of thing to promote it, and so I will be happy to make a motion for approval of Resolution 7402 with that typo correction.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, Mr. Mays. We'll move now to item four for possible action, Discussion Regarding Classification and Compensation Study. Mr. Tetter?
Yes, Bryce Bolt, our Administrative Services Director, will be providing the overview of this item, and then he'll be inviting up the representative from Evergreen Solutions, which is Stacy Witchell. But first, I wanted to say a couple of things. A huge thank you to our Personnel Administration Office, Vanessa Cohen and Lourdes Martin. They spent a lot of time getting the information to Evergreen Solutions, all of the data for them to do this study for us, and they keep the world turning for our 317 employees, combined part and full-time employees. So big thank you to them. And tonight is a time for you to digest the information, ask questions, have a back-and-forth with, with Evergreen Solutions, and the thought is to bring this back at a future meeting for adoption.
Thank you. Mr. Bolt?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mr. Tetter, I appreciate that for the staff. They really do a good work and appreciate it. This evening, Ms. Stacy Witchell of Evergreen Solutions is here to present the report. Evergreen Solutions developed over the last few years, I'm sorry, over the last several months. Seems like years, but it's only been a few months. For them, it seems like years, I can tell you that. The background on this study is outlined in the staff report, as is Ms. Witchell's impressive bio. But to that, I'd like to add that I was completely and totally impressed by Ms. Witchell's immersion in this project, her dedication to the task, and really, I think, a good product at the end. I appreciate her commitment and appreciate your time and consideration of the work. I appreciate her commitment and appreciate your time and consideration of the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
There a...
Clicker's right there.
All right, so they're all different, we'll see. Okay, we'll see how this works. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Thank you for having me here today. It's Bryson Stacy Witchel with Evergreen Solutions, a project manager with Evergreen. Been working on your classification and compensation study for quite a while, not, not quite years, but there was, there was, there was a few moments, Bryce, just a few. So thank you for having me here today. Let's run through our presentation just to provide you...
Sorry, can you pull the mic down a little?
Down, yes, I'm short, I'm sorry. Even with heels, there you go, is that better?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. All right, so we'll provide an overview here for you and go through, answer any questions that you have. And do I point?
Don't rub it off, sir. You put your... Right there, yeah. Yeah.
Okay. All right, so we'll go through, it says in the agenda here, but I'll just provide a quick overview of what we did, what this process is, the different phases of the project and the different steps along the way, and also recommendations, our findings, and then what we still have to do. So for the study process overall, I'm gonna flip here. Study process overall, we conducted employee outreach. And I'm gonna go into all, each of these steps here in a little bit more detail in a minute. We did conduct it, employee outreach. We did an assessment of your current pay scales, your current, current pay structure. We discussed with your city leadership, our project team, city, the compensation philosophy. Where does the city want to be competitively compared to its peers? What does that structure need to look like internally to fit your needs? We did an internal equity analysis by using what we call our job assessment tool. It's a tool that we use, in effect, a survey that we use to come through and then evaluate and, and create a hierarchy of your different classifications. We did an external equity analysis by doing a market survey to look at what these identified peers are doing and what their pay structures look like, and see how you compare. And we developed new competitive pay structures for you that provide you some organization across all different groupings. We assigned classifications, each classification to a pay grade. So we looked at every single classification that you have. And then we also providing some implementation options and recommendations, and then an estimate of what the cost would be. Remaining task, finalize that report. You do have a report that is, is final. I'm gonna wait to release stamp final on that until after this meeting to make sure there's no other feedback or input that you have that needs to have, needs to go into here and make any changes or updates. We're still gonna provide training to your HR staff on how to implement the system and manage it going forward. Something we call the Job Force Manager. So let them manage this into the long-term, add new positions, make adjustments, do budget projections moving forward. And then updating all of your job descriptions. So everything will be current, will reflect current roles, responsibilities, functions, FLSA. So for employee outreach, this process is where we meet with your staff. We do interviews, and we also do focus groups. So we make sure we get a good representation of all the classifications, and we get people from different length of tenure. So some newer hires and folks that have been here for quite a while to provide input here. We met with a lot of your staff, they were very engaging, so we appreciate that input. There, across the board, when we started these focus groups, one of the first questions we asked people is what drew people to the city? Why are they still here? What keeps them here? And across all focus groups, it was that the family atmosphere, their peers, those work relationships, the appreciation of leadership. They really felt like they had supportive leadership at multiple different levels. Your benefits program is one of the big draws. And then also, there's a strong sense of pride in what they do, and they've had a very, a big commitment to service for this community. We also asked them what their areas of concern are in regards to compensation and classification. So we asked them specifically, you know, what, are things structured correctly? Are there areas that you feel like need attention? And the, the input that we got, there's more of it that's in that report, but here's a few things I wanted to pull out. There was a concern, some staff would like additional professional training, development, so they can continue to grow in those fields. Some felt like their chosen careers didn't have enough career path in them. So like a level one, two, three, a junior, a senior type position. So they wanted some more room for growth in their chosen careers. Some felt like they weren't maybe keeping up with increases of cost of living, inflation, maybe falling behind peers. There was also a concern with some about compression of salaries internally. And then also, some said their jobs had just evolved over time, and those job descriptions had not kept up with that change. In regards to benefits, everything was positive. A lot of positive input on your benefits in total. That's health benefits, retirement benefits, the leave, the leave policies. That was a big draw for having staff here. There was, it says concern here, but really it was a request. I guess there, there used to be a policy where there was some compensation for compensation or tuition assistance for different training. So there was a request that some would like to see that come back, but that was about the extent of anything on that critical side. Now with any study, we gotta have a starting point to evaluate the data and to build off of. So for us, that starting date where we looked at your data as of date, for us, that was October 6, 2021. So that was that snapshot that we used to build this foundation. So what we did is we looked at all of your employee database. So on that day, you had 317 employees, 182 full-time. You had 146 classifications, 28 of them vacant, either not used or vacancies. You have four pay plans. You have union pay plans with a variety of steps in them. You had hourly non-represented pay plan, also with a different number of steps in there, and those were hourly pays. You had appointed deputy exempt. So you had appointed members, which are kind of set aside from the rest of these pay grades, but you include them here. You had deputy, you're exempt, your senior leadership, senior leadership positions didn't have ranges, they had flat salaries. So there was no minimum and maximum to evaluate and compare with those. And then your part-time classifications, some had ranges, a lot of them also had flat rates. A few things from the report I wanted to pull out here was your length of tenure of a lot of your staff. You have a lot of staff here that have built their careers here at Boulder City. And so you've got a lot of length of tenure in your classifications. Who on average, you had just shy of 12 years, which that's, that's a pretty high number compared to other areas that we looked at. You have an uncommon structure. You have a lot of classifications without pay ranges. Then you have other pay ranges that are managing each position individually. So you're managing individual instead of managing across pay grades, where you're not combining or grouping classifications. You had inconsistency in your range spreads in your pay grades and your number of steps. And the majority of your staff members were at that higher end of their pay ranges. Now, a lot of instances, sometimes that means you don't have enough horizontal movement for staff to grow in those classifications. In y'all's instance, it also means you've had a lot of people that have been here for a long time. To address internal equities, what we do is we administer what we call this job assessment tool, which is in effect, it's a survey. We apply it to all of your staff members, and we ask them to answer questions about their specific job. So we ask them to answer questions that relate to those five job factors, leadership, their working conditions, those complexities. And then we allow the supervisors to then review what their direct reports have submitted, you know, to make sure that they're accurate. Were they inflated? Did they forget something? So they can comment on top of what their direct reports have included. All in all, this is a multi-step, multi-week process. We allow about two weeks or so for the employees to complete those surveys, another week or two for supervisors to then review and provide comments on. And then we take all that data in, and we evaluate it, and we compare it against the job descriptions that we have, and also what we learned during focus groups. Do we make sure, do they line up? And then we take and we assign values to those different job factors. So that allows us to create a hierarchy of positions of all of your classifications. Then we take our findings and we share them with your project team here to go back and review it, because we're looking at paper, right? So sometimes functionally, things are a little bit different. And so we ask them to review and provide input on that hierarchy that we created. And then we're gonna use that hierarchy to help build your system later on. With your job assessments, we'd like to get at least 50% response rates with these projects that we do. You get 67% of your employees completed those surveys. So that's a really good percentage. And almost half of them were reviewed by supervisors. One of the next things that we do is look at your market surveys. So we worked with your team, again, to identify peers to go to market for. And we identified 16 of them. And they're, they're picked for on a variety of factors. Sometimes we're looking at demographics, we're looking at proximity, we're looking at size of the organization, we're looking at income levels, housing. So those are all those things we take into account. A lot of them end up being in close proximity to you. But sometimes, we wanna go outside of that and select some of those comparable peers to see how you're comparing. Of the 16 peers, we selected 15 participated in our surveys. We had a really high participation rate. We took 60 classifications to market, I say, that serves as our benchmarks to compare and see where Boulder City stands up compared to the others. Overall, we had eight responses per classification. So it means for all 60 of them, on average, we had a minimum of eight responses for each one of those to be able to compare the data. Boulder City is on average at the 50th percentile, 21.4% ahead of the minimums. You drop to 14.7 at the midpoints, and then 9.6 ahead of those market maximums, okay? Now, keep in mind, you manage things very differently here than the other cities are. They're managing by pay grades and groupings and ranges. You're managing by position. So, and not all those classifications had ranges. Some of them had flat salaries. So it's, it's not, it's a little difficult to compare from the minimum to the maximum when I don't have a min or max range, okay? But that still gives you an idea regardless. You guys are competitive at the 50th percentile already. And also, keep in mind here, those are averages. Some of them are below, some of them are above. For the benefit survey, same 16 peers, we were only able to collect data from eight of those peers, though. We were asking questions based on health insurance, retirement, your leave, and those other policies. If you're looking at health and retirement, very comparable to your peers. When you add in the other components with your leave policies, the way people are able to earn leave, accrue leave, use leave, and then also looking at the four-day work weeks that are instilled here, across the board, you have a, a more competitive plan than your peers. Now, before we could build the compensation policy, right, compensation plan for you, we had to discuss compensation philosophy. And what that means is that's that discussion when we sit there and talk about how competitive does a city want to be? Do you want to be leading the market? Do you want to be lagging the market? Do you want to be at 50th percentile? Or do you want to be up higher at 70 or 80 percentile of your peers, right? We looked at what, what does the city need? We want to make sure we're building a plan for you that is equitable. The hierarchy, the structure fits your organization, and it's flexible enough to grow with you over time. The other thing that we did is we talked about what does a structure need to do? Do we want open ranges or do we want step plans? Do we want hybrid? Do we want a little bit of both? So those are those questions we had going into it. So what we built it on was, let's bring Boulder City back to, correct it back over towards 50 to 60% at that market, right? Because right now, you're really leading up higher. So this is gonna correct you down over, over time to 50 to 60%. And again, we also then wanted to make sure this plan could grow with you. And we also landed on, let's do both. Let's build open range plans for some of these classifications and groupings, and then let's build step plans for some of the others. So here's some of our proposals for your classification system. Your class, your classifications don't need much updating or changing. You've got a good classification structure that fits you and fits the size of the city. We'll say there are a few updates, and we got 10 of them listed here, where we're recommending these be updated to these titles. This is just current contemporary job titles. This is reflecting what their job duties have evolved into and what they're doing. And there was a couple of them, like administrative assistant, one, two, three, that provides a very transparent kind of career path or growth opportunity for that class. Now, the next slides are gonna be your compensation plans that we're gonna recommend for, for each of the different groupings we mentioned earlier, okay? And now, keep in mind, not an apples-to-apples comparison with what you have now to this. This is a very different structure than what you have. This puts ranges on every position, every classification, and it also provides you some consistency in all of your plans. It gets away from that single organization or management at one position level and puts things in pay grades and groupings, okay? So for your exempt classification, so we have eight pay grades for your exempt. So this is your senior-level leadership positions, okay? You've got eight pay grades, and then range spreads of 40%. For your part-time classifications, also eight pay grades, and then ranges of 40%. So you've got ranges for each of these, and these are the ones that you did not have ranges in prior to. And you've also got a consistent range spread, all right? We are not recommending steps for part-time. There's a variety of positions within this grouping, and there's also, it's the nature of, of part-time work, the range system seems to work better. For your non-bargaining units, we're recommending here nine pay grades for 12 steps, okay? And then here, range spread of 40%. Bargaining units for fire, this is, all the bargaining units are gonna be from this point forward. So bargaining units for fire, four pay grades, 12 steps, with a range spread of 35%. Your bargaining units for police, four pay grades, 12 steps, and a range spreads here of 35%. Your supervisor's bargaining unit, three pay grades, 12 steps. Range spreads here, range spreads here are 45%. I apologize for that, the typo on the bullet statement. Your electrical bargaining unit, four pay grades, 12 steps, with a range of 35%. Did I skip one? No, okay. Clerical, three pay grades, 12 steps, with a range of 35%. Blue collar, eight pay grades, 12 steps, range spreads of 35%. So there's your, your pay grades and that structure overall. Where you see the yellow highlight boxes right there, that signifies in the Excel table, a solution file, we call it, so your staff are working with it. Those are the tables where they can adjust and change those numbers, their calculation fields, and then it would change the plan throughout, so they can look at what the changes would do. So that way, they don't change the wrong field. So we talked about implementation options, and what strategy you could use to implement and migrate your employees from existing structure to this new structure. We evaluated a few things, I'll explain them here. Apologize, this kind of breaks all the PowerPoint rules of too much in one, one box. But this is, so, one of the things we looked at was bring to new minimum. So what this would do, I'm talking my hands for a second. What this would do is it would look at somebody's current salary, and it would crosswalk them over to the new plan. And if they are already above that new minimum, then there's no change for that individual. If they're on a step plan and we're moving to a new step, we would just bring them to the next closest step. So that would be the only change you would see there. If they're not making that new minimum, then we would correct them to make the new minimum, okay? One of the other things we looked at was class year parity and higher year parity. These are both very similar. Class year parity looks at the, the time in that current classification, and it also looks at the amount of money that they're currently making, that salary in that classification. So then it takes those two variables, and it looks at a 30-year career trajectory, does a linear regression, pulls them together to see where they would be placed on this new pay plan, okay? So it's looking at time and classification and current salary. Higher year parity does the same thing, but instead of time and class, it's since their original hire date, okay? And then current range penetration, what that one's gonna do is look at an individual within their pay grade and look to see where they are from minimum to maximum. So are they 30% into that range? If so, we're gonna move them 30% into the new range when we crosswalk them over, okay? So those are those, those that we evaluated for you. For your bargaining units, we're recommending current range penetration. Could be, it would be one method to be able to apply across the board to all your bargaining units. It would take them where they currently are, 30%, 20%, 40% in, and move them to that same level on this new pay plan, okay? Now, what we did here, though, we increased your number of steps, right? That really especially meets the needs of your long-tenured employees. So we went from four, five, or six, and a few other numbers, steps, to 12. So since we increased it so much, we recommended a cap of 10% or looking at midpoint, because I don't want to artificially push somebody above midpoint, right? That was our recommendation here. So it's range penetration, but with a cap, all right? So this would be 120 employees receiving adjustments for an average of 6.5%. And remember, that's across all of your union plans. From, for your part-time and your exempt staff, we're recommending bring to new minimum. Remember, this is where you didn't have ranges in the first place, right? When we first started this. So this would be, let's reset body, reset everybody on a new pay structure, and they're all gonna have min and max ranges, all right? So this is adjusting everybody to that new salary. Your biggest impact here is your part-timers. But your part-time salary scale right now, start... But your part-time salary scale right now starts at, tail, 975, I believe, right now an hour. So we're suggesting that moved at 1050 an hour. So that's, that's not an insubstantial increase in that pay scale. So that would be 107 employees receiving adjustments, and that's just shy of 10% of a total. But again, that, that one big move is, accounts for a lot of that. For your exempt senior-level positions, that's a total of five employees that will be receiving adjustments with an average percent adjustment of 3.8%. I will point out there with that five, one of the individuals in that grouping, that the increase is also due to a classification change that was recommended based on current duties and responsibilities. Okay? Taking that one out, you would only be looking at four people receiving adjustments. For your non-bargaining units, recommendation here is class year parity. So that's the one I talked about that looked at time and class plus current salaries, 30-year trajectory, and lined them up and moves them over to the new plan. That'd be 20 employees with a 2.9% adjustment. So taking it all into account, the total implementation cost would be $846,000, affecting 252 staff members for a 5.8% average adjustment. Now, keep in mind, this is one recommended approach. Okay? You could also look at that bring to new minimum for your other categories as well, and that, that dollar amount then adjustment is greatly decreased. And we have those numbers available for you. I can give them to you after they're, they're back in my bag. Final recommendations would be to take those 10 classification changes and implement those. Would be to implement these, this new pay structure, so it'd be competitive. You'd maintain your level of competitiveness moving forward. And then you would also have an organized structured plan with pay ranges throughout to crosswalk staff from the current pay structure to this new one, to update your current job descriptions, which we're, we're doing that with you right now. Conduct small-scale surveys, check-ins, if you will, periodically to see how you're comparing with market to make sure that you're still maintaining that competitive area where you want to be. This pay structure gives you the growth, both vertically and horizontally, that you need for your size of government, for your number of employees here. We've got pay grades that we recommended in there that wouldn't even be utilized currently, but would allow for time to be able to use them. And then, of course, with all government policies, paperwork, HR review, revise, to make sure it stays relevant and update is needed. So that concludes the presentation. So any questions?
Thank you. Questions or comments? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you very much for the presentation. I really appreciate it. One of my questions is regarding, you know, making sure that we still remain attractive to, to new hires. You know, we talked about how we have a really high retention rate here. You know, so, but, you know, once we get people through the door, we get people to stick around. But we are starting to see it become a little bit more difficult to fill positions. You know, you know, some positions are taking longer and longer to fill. So how do we remain, maybe competitive isn't the right word. We're never going to be able to compete with Henderson and Las Vegas. But how do we remain flexible so that we are still attractive to the best and brightest that are out there looking to fill these positions?
Good question. So what we did with the pay plans is we, we looked at where you are currently. Right? So right now, currently, even taking into account some of the variations in, in your current structure compared with your, with your peers, you are still probably sitting at about 70% of the market. This new structure is going to rein that in over time with some retirements to 50 to 60%. So you're still maintaining your competitive edge there. The length of time that we're allowing for your steps, people can grow more in those careers or not, they're not topping out at four, five, six years. So they've got more room horizontally to grow. And then we also increased the maximums because we increased the steps. So we had to increase the maximums there, too. But we also allowed you some grouping, so you're able to structure and allow movement and future career pathing as you need to.
Thank you. Yeah, you know, because I think that is one of my big concerns is, you know, we're living in a time right now where we, you know, hear things like the big quit, the great resignation. You know, we are seeing, you know, the older generation starting to retire at a, at a high rate. You know, we are going to have, you know, important positions that open up, you know, with time, because no one can work forever. You know, no one should have to.
No one should have to work forever.
Right, exactly. You know, and so that's just, you know, that's just one of the areas of concern for me is making sure that, that we do remain, you know, desirable as a place to work at. So I do appreciate that, that input. I guess one of my other questions would be, as far as implementation goes, maybe this is better for the manager. When we are, you know, when and should we accept some of these recommendations or all of them? Are we talking about implementation? You know, we're approaching the end of this fiscal year, going to be talking budget. Would the implementation come in then with the new fiscal year and as part of those budget talks?
That's, that's the general idea, that it would be incorporated into the next budget, yes.
Thank you very much.
And I believe, too, in regard to that, we do have contracts that are coming to an end. So that is part of the process, is some of these contracts are expiring at the end of the fiscal year.
Correct. And so those step plans would, would also be subject to those, those new contracts.
Thank you. Councilmember Bridges?
Yes, thank you very much. That was very interesting. I, I, it was good to hear the items that were positive, and it was very interesting to hear the things that were concerns that we might be able to control. And I didn't hear anything about, say, the issue of education contributing to college tuition and some, along those lines, professional development. How does that fit into this picture? Is this another outside issue that has to be discussed at, at a managerial level or by the council? Or is this something that's added in? Because that also has a cost.
Yeah, those do have costs. And that would be something that'd be up to, up to the city council, be up to, you know, looking, you know, with, with Mr. Tedder here and going through what, what is doable? You know, what, what is sustainable, and what makes sense for the city? There is a cost to tuition reimbursement. There's a cost to providing professional development and training to staff. It also benefits staff if they're able to continue to grow in their career path. So the trade-off would be, would have to be something you guys would have to consider.
I, thank you. Thank you. And I truly appreciate the addition of the, of the grades and the classes because I remember being a young worker a million years ago and knowing that there was hope. And, and I think that also answers the question of how do you become an attractive employer? And that is, I'm not going to top out on my salary in five years. And there's a lot more choice. Now, these, when you have the 12, I'm trying to see the word for, the 12 steps, are those assumed to be annual? Are those are merit, or are those considered an annual increase?
They could be. It's going to be, it could be a couple of different things. So it could be an annual increase, a cost of living, a merit. It could be a hybrid of both. I've seen some that did that. So there would be a COLA increase, and then anything additional would be a merit on top of it to total to where those steps are. It can also be, it doesn't have to be annual. Some people do these a step for every year, two years, three years. So there's a lot of variation on how that part of it could be implemented. And a lot of that would come to with your, with your negotiating units during those negotiations, how that would translate into.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yeah, one thing I really liked about this is that it's very transparent for a person coming into a position or a job. Not only does it allow them growth, but it allows them to see what their opportunity for growth is. So I, I do like the idea of it being basically fair and equitable when you come in and not a guessing game. So I, I really did like that part of it, and I appreciated all the information that you gave us. Just curious, comparatively speaking to the markets that Councilmember Adams talked about, Henderson or Las Vegas, did they reply enough so that we could see where we stood in connection with them?
We do. And I don't, I don't have that in front of me, but we've given that information already and the full market survey with all of the raw data and the details. So that's something I can email back to you tomorrow.
Okay, that'd be great. Just because we're not of the same nature as those cities, but we are close enough that they are competitors in a lot of ways for hiring individuals.
Right. Yeah, you're in close proximity here. So definitely, that's somebody you are competing with. And that came up during this focus groups, too. That those are some of your prime competitors.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? I also want to thank you for the effort on this. You know, I, I know we've been going through some of these discussions. It was brought up that the last time things changed here was something like 1997. So, yeah.
Couple of years ago.
Yeah, things have probably changed over a quarter century. The other point being that apparently there was one of these studies done, I believe it was 2012, but no action was taken with the results of that. So we're living with a system that is old. And I think that, you know, things have changed. Point that I believe needs to be brought out to our employees, this is not an attempt to lower people's wages at this time. You've made it clear that this would actually result in wage increases for some employees as they get brought over to the new structure. It may be found that, you know, they, they deserve a raise for whatever it is, their tenure, the market value or market position of that particular position. So, you know, we do need to control costs. We, you know, our bosses are the taxpayers. But we also do want to have employees that are good at their jobs and, and desire to work here. So I, I think what, the plan that has been developed here is a good one. I, I think it, it helps satisfy the desires of employees as well as continuing to watch our responsibilities to the taxpayers. So there's a lot in this that I think will allow managers to have the ability to, you know, be able to manage their employees, that if this employee is doing a great job, then there's some flexibility built in there. The part-time employees or, or the entry-level positions, again, that was something that I had brought up when all of this started. We need to look hard at those. You know, the 10, I believe you said it was 1050 that it would increase to? I'm still not sure that, that that's sufficient, to be honest with you. I know here in the state of Nevada, the minimum wage is set to increase over the next few years. I believe there's been one increase already. You know, we need to make sure that we're paying attention to what that is so that at that level, we can be competitive. I know when I look at job listings for the city, you know, I see a lot of those positions are open because I'm guessing people are not taking those jobs. So again, I, I think that's important, whether that's lifeguards or whatever. You know, you had mentioned, too, I believe you had mentioned, there's a range now for that pay level?
Yes.
And, you know, my concern is, let, let's use the position of lifeguard as an example, or maybe a crossing guard. A person who works one season, and then the next season to say, well, we're going to pay you exactly the same even though you're experienced now. Again, I think there should be some flexibility there, that if the person did a good job previously, that there's an opportunity for them to be hired in with a wage increase based on the experience that they already have. So I realize that's not a large amount of our employees, but when I look at those positions, they don't seem to be attracting very many candidates for them. And those positions are important for the city. The, one thing I'm not clear about is, you know, you're talking about these pay ranges now with a minimum, midpoint, and maximum. Are we still talking about cost of living increases in addition to this? Or are those two things being combined now?
They're, they're being combined here, in effect, with these step plan movements. So the step plans and the way they are set up allow you enough room between them to provide a cost of living. So that could be your annual progression is that step increase every year. And that, given the plan, it's not in front of me right now, but I believe it's anywhere from 1.5 to 2.5% per step, depending on the pay grades.
All right. Because I know right now, you know, it's being referred to as a cost of living adjustment, but it, for most of the employees, it's just been a flat 3% over the contract that has been in effect now for many of the employees for the past five years. You know, when I look at the way other entities, whether they're governments or businesses, set up their plans, there are often merit increases that are separate from cost of living increases. So we're looking at, at just one payment scheme then that would be determined, you know, either annually or during the life of a contract.
That, as presented right here, yes, that's what it is. That doesn't keep you from taking a hybrid approach. We have several other clients, that's what they're doing. They have a standard COLA, if you will. So you've got your cost of living adjustments. And then they're also having a performance, a merit increase on top of that. So in total, the two of them may come to 3.5%, but that's what they're doing.
Okay. And Mayor, I think that explains the, the step plans. And if you're thinking about the minimum midpoint max on, let's say, an exempt position, that person would just move up along their scale if, you know, you have a 3% cost of living increase, or if we decided to do some kind of hybrid system with a cost of living and a merit increase, then they would just move up that yearly increase through their scale.
Well, I, I, again, the concern is, I think we're here to make some decisions tonight. So, you know, which one is it?
So on the step plan, that would be governed by the agreement with, with the labor negotiations.
Okay, so we're looking this, then, whatever we may decide this evening is still going to be dependent then on whatever negotiations may occur over the next few months.
Correct. And, and we're not looking for any action tonight. It'll come back at a later meeting.
All right. You had mentioned the benefits package that we have. Was that involved in the analysis you did as far as where our total compensation was with regard to other entities?
Yes.
Okay. Because again, we do, at least my understanding is, we do have a fairly generous benefits package. Health insurance, I believe, is paid for. You know, the other insurance plans, the accumulation of vacation time, sick time. Those, I have been told, we tend to be above where our peers might be.
You are, yeah. And that was, earlier on in that presentation, we talked through that. If you looked at, at just health and retirement, you're on par with your peers. But the level of employer contribution that you have here, in addition to your leave policies that you have here, it puts you above the market.
You know, I, I realize we're talking about, you know, these different steps and all. Something that I had brought up before, and I know other councilmembers had as well, is how we do treat employees who are not full-time. You know, if they're a part-time employee, are they desiring to be a full-time employee? Similarly, if you are a part-time employee, is your time, your schedule being provided in such a way that a person is putting in their hours at work, and then they go on with their life? And information that I've learned is, we need to take a hard look at that. And I realize within this structure that you're talking about, that's really not addressed in there. But I do want to make that part of the conversation of any policy that we may arrive at. You know, I've been told there are employees who are asked to come in for one or two hours, then told to leave, then told to come back for additional time. That is not fair to the employee to have that type of scheduling set for them. That may be another reason why we're having a difficult time with these part-time positions. So I just think we need to keep that as part of this conversation. So, I just think we need to keep that as part of this conversation, even though it's not directly related to these pay scales and that type of thing. And then with regard to our appointed official positions, that would be the city manager, city clerk, city attorney, and the municipal judge. Those are things that are defined within our city charter. The city charter is clear that those positions are separate from the other employees of the city. I think that, you know, as a council, we should have agreement or disagreement as far as whether those positions are going to remain as the city charter states they are, as appointed officials whose compensation is arrived at by negotiation or by review of the city council. So, this is a for-action item? Is that correct?
This item is for discussion and possible direction, not action.
Okay. Well, that would be my desire, that the direction be that those appointed officials remain as appointed officials as stated in our city charter and not included within classifications that are being proposed for this. Any other thoughts on that subject by other members of council? Councilmember Bridges?
Okay, so right now, they are being included in the exempt category, is that?
Well, that's where we did the evaluation, just given the level of those positions. But in that, in the final report, those are split out. So, you have your pay grades, you know, through eight for that. And then I listed the other ones as appointed.
Okay, so they're part of the process, but they're not within that eight?
Exactly. It was provided for informational purposes.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I think the point there is that there have been separate contracts negotiated with each of the appointed officials. And, you know, there are yearly reviews. There are, a maximum was set within those contracts. So, it would not be subject to these other classifications that are being proposed. Well, I believe that addresses my concerns on this. Again, I really do think that this is an opportunity for employees to look at where they may feel they've stagnated. And I thank you for the general breakout that you've had on this. You know, we want to keep employees that are doing a good job here. And I think this allows them to do it. I just want to convey to all of our employees, this isn't an attempt to reduce anything. This is actually providing opportunities for them to continue to grow with the city.
Absolutely. We would never recommend within here anybody have a salary reduction.
All right. Councilmember Jorgensen?
I know you said at the beginning, this was for discussion and maybe direction a little bit. And I was wondering, since we talked a little bit about the hybrid model and that you've done that with other, could we maybe, in the future, see what a hybrid model would look like of COLA, as you said it, versus... Because, did you say it's a two percent step increase that you include? And typically, if right now, we're doing a three percent cost of living, it's almost like if that's included, right, that it's a reduction of cost in living? Am I looking at that correctly?
It would be in addition.
In addition, in the hybrid model?
In the hybrid model, we would want to look. I don't want to... Go ahead, sorry.
Well, so if you have a two percent step increase and you're putting a three percent COLA on top of that, then, yeah, that would be five percent. But if it's a two percent step increase and plus one, then you'd get to three. But I'll stop and I'll let Stacy continue.
So, for some of the hybrid models I've done in the past, where people have done both, because pay for performance has been something that's been very much part of how they progressed employees horizontally through those pay grades. And so, we provided, for some of them, we provided steps so you could, for budgeting purposes. So, you could see how people would progress and what those dollar amounts might look like. But you can see really quickly, if you didn't have kind of two ways to move people through on those steps, you get somebody that gets a COLA, this person gets a merit, this one doesn't get a merit. So, now everybody's on these staggered steps and it becomes difficult to manage. And Bryce has thrown me a lot of challenges. I hate to throw that challenge back at him. But what we would do is provide, at a maximum, this is where you would be on these step plans, given every year or every two years, whatever that decision is made. And then we would provide you with these ranges to utilize so you know where people were at any given point, almost percentile-wise, within those ranges. So, it's a little bit of both. I can email you an example later on if that would kind of help, because I know I'm visual. I need to see it. Okay?
Councilmember Bridges?
Is part of this deal a spread, like an interactive spreadsheet where HR could go in and say, "Okay, for this group, we are going to give the three percent COLA and you could just put that three percent increase in that first number and it's going to go..."
It will.
...and give you everything at the end that... So, you would know what that next year's increase could be, but you've already included the COLA across and down.
Yes. Yes, there's calculation fields in here, so you can add those percentages and apply them. And we applied it to each individual grouping, so you can look at each one separately.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Have we provided direction? I'm not sure that we have, but have we given you sufficient direction?
I think we have sufficient direction. I'll take all of your comments and I'll work with Bryce to bring this back at a later meeting for adoption.
All right. Again, I appreciate very much the work that has gone into this. I think that if our employees will take an opportunity to look at this, they will see that there is a lot of growth built into this. And as was mentioned earlier, it's transparent to the employees. It's not just a, "We'll see what happens at the beginning of the next fiscal year" type thing. So, thank you for the work that's gone into it.
Well, you're welcome, and thank you for giving us the opportunity. But any other questions, please don't hesitate to reach out.
Thank you. All right, moving on then to item number five pertaining to ballot questions. I guess that would be Madam City Attorney.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item five, before you this evening, is matters pertaining to ballot questions for the 2022 general election. So, beginning with item B, you have before you Resolution 7404. If approved by the city council, this resolution would place a question on the 2022 general election ballot, asking registered voters whether the city should sell approximately 16.3 acres located southeast of Boulder City Parkway and Veterans Memorial Drive for development of a grocery store and associated retail uses. The question also, before you for discussion, would be what the expenditure of the proceeds should be used for. Typically, when these ballot questions regarding land sales are placed, they also direct where the proceeds of the sale should go. In the past, the city, the ballot questions have asked voters if the proceeds should be directed to public safety, capital improvement projects, and debt. And so, we have as a placeholder in there generally capital improvement projects, as the money does go into the capital improvement fund. So, we just have a general capital improvement projects is what the proceeds would be directed toward. In addition, the question would specify that the land, if sold, would be subject to a deed restriction, which would limit the use of the land to primarily being a grocery store. That concludes my presentation on item 5B.
Thank you. Questions or comments regarding this particular item? Councilmember Jorgensen?
So, looking at this, at 16.3 acres, I know that we had talked about this prior at the last meeting. Was there a way to narrow the amount of acres? I know that you were looking to have access from Nevada Highway and then also access along Veterans, right?
Correct. So, this particular property is shaped kind of like a triangle, not quite. And it has two major electric transmission lines running through it. So, you can't build underneath the transmission lines. And to get that frontage access onto Boulder City Parkway, you need that extra front area, which could be a drive and be landscaped with a water-smart landscape. But for it to work with both entrances and have the frontage for the signage, it does need to be that 16 acres. I did, well, two things. Our economic development coordinator did reach out to the broker community to ask the willingness to accept deed restrictions like that. And there's no issues there. And then we have compiled a list of other shopping centers with grocery stores. So, the Smiths Market Place on Lake Mead Parkway, it's 12.2 acres. Sprouts on Green Valley Parkway is 9.6. The Whole Foods Market on Green Valley as well is 8.1 acres. And those don't have the same challenging shape. They're more of a square rectangle and don't have the transmission lines running through them. So, that's the reason for the size of the property. The building would be farther back.
When you say you can't build anything under that, does that also include a parking lot?
You can do parking as long as it's temporary. Like, people aren't living nearby and they're not there for 24 hours a day.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Councilmember Fox?
With that, the driveway leading from Nevada Highway, how many acres is that by itself?
I would have to take a look at that.
Okay. And then with the follow-up on her, Councilman Sherry's question. So, it could be used as a parking lot if it's, I guess, that space, since it's not 24 hours or...
Right, so it'd be an access drive into the property, and then most likely, there would be parking.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Do you have a visual for this, of this parcel of land? Does, do we have a visual layout? Did we have?
Is it in the packet?
Might have been in the last packet.
Yeah, I think it was in the last packet, but we can get it to you.
Yeah, my recollection is, it's very narrow at Boulder City Parkway. And yeah, I know we all fall in the habit of saying Nevada Highway, but it is now Boulder City Parkway. It's fairly narrow there, I would say, maybe a couple hundred feet. And then it, again, sort of triangle shape, spreads out from that point. But as you've mentioned, there are transmission lines that run overhead there. So, you know, I don't know that the entire 16-acre plot is going to be developable, but again, it fits that with the frontage on Boulder City Parkway and potentially on Veterans Parkway as well. Although on Veterans Parkway, I believe there's also an open flood channel on that side that, you know, something would have to be engineered to allow that to remain in place.
It is a challenging site. And when staff was looking for properties for a grocery store, the main thing that we've heard all along in our quest for a grocery store is that people want to be, they want that frontage for the traffic counts. And that goes into a lot of the, you know, developer, they need that to make the grocery store work.
I would add that with our current ballot question timeline, we do have a little more time to continue to discuss this ballot question. So, we could bring it back at a later meeting with maps and everything like that, if you'd prefer. This draft is merely seeks to incorporate some of the direction I received from city council, including the deed restriction, et cetera. And also, we need discussion on what the proceeds should go for, or at least be directed towards in the ballot question. Obviously, the voters have ultimate approval on whether this land is sold at all and whether the proceeds are approved for what the ballot question suggests.
With regard to the deed restriction, have you had an opportunity, Madam City Attorney, to make a determination or an evaluation of the wording of that being in such a way that we wouldn't see something happen five or 10 years down the road, that that restriction could be in place for an extended period of time?
Yes, I do.
And you're confident that something like that could be written into any sales agreement?
Absolutely.
With regard to the proceeds from it, you know, I know that we currently have something that the voters had approved at the last election with the sale of land around Boulder Creek. And I believe for that, 90% of that's going potentially towards the construction of a new municipal pool, and 10% was devoted to public safety. Something similar to that, proceeds from this, I could see 50% of the money going to street and road improvements, 30% going to public safety. And that might include things like renovation at the police department and a training facility that has been discussed previously. 15% to renovation of the Smith Building. And the remaining 5% towards preservation of our city-owned property that's within the historic district. And I do understand that that, you know, gets to be wordy. The current sale, proposed sale for the Boulder Creek land is pretty straightforward, 90% pool, 10% public safety. But I do feel that these proportions would address some of the needs that we currently have for the city. Councilmember Jorgensen?
I'm just curious, if we use that money to renovate the Smith Building, then what would it be used for?
I believe that there are things that that building is currently not being used for, particularly the upper floor. But certainly, when we look at how some of our current departments are working, I could foresee it being used for city staff offices, additional meeting rooms, you know, potential for, if this building were unusable, where would employees work temporarily? I think that since we own the building, it's heavily underutilized right now. Councilmember Adams?
I'll just add to the extent of the discussion regarding the Smith Building is that it is kind of also our one location, one of our few, that we can hold sizable town halls, big gatherings. We need to make sure we do our best to preserve that because if, at one point, we don't, because we fail to upkeep it, we might not have that as viable solution readily available for us. So, I do think it's important that we make sure that that building is properly kept up and maintained.
Anyone else? And again, you know, I've suggested the largest portion of it go to street and road improvements. We do get funding from regional transportation, but that tends to be on a project basis. And if we look at the report that has been completed now on the condition of our streets, it makes pretty clear that we have streets that are deteriorating now. And well, that deterioration is going to accelerate. And will, that deterioration is going to accelerate if something isn't done. So the cost would be accelerating as well. And really, in our city budget, uh, we don't, we haven't uh put money towards street and road repairs. We've pretty much been totally reliant on waiting for the RTC funding. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you. With regards to the deed restrictions, I know we've talked a lot about that. You know, it it is not explicitly stated anywhere uh in the question, obviously, or in the digest specifically. Um, is is there an issue with that or, you know, because my, I guess my biggest fear here is, you know, this gets passed, everybody wants a grocery store, everybody votes yes, and then, you know, there's no movement on it for another ten plus years. And then, you know, for all the great intention we might have up here, you know, in ten, fifteen years, you know, it might be the same intention, but we might end up with something different, you know, if that's not part of the question itself.
Sure. Um, it is in the explanation and digest. Um, it is not a part of the actual question, um, but it is a part of the explanation and digest. And I do believe that is sufficient to limit what the land can be sold for and um and would require, um, I I think it would be clear that the intent of the voters is to have a deed restriction by including in the explanation. And so I think it would um be problematic if the land was sold without a deed restriction.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Uh, well, I I guess it would depend then on this one whether uh anyone wishes additional information regarding the shape of the land or uh do we go ahead and approve this resolution this evening? I'll make the motion to approve the resolution. Anyone wishing to second? I'll second. All those, well, any further discussion? All those in favor? Alright, excuse me. Madam City Attorney?
Um, I'm sorry, never, never mind. I I'm just, I think that it might be more clear, um, you know, there is time on this and it might be more clear, you know, for the public to to have ahead of time what the money would go toward. Like, you know, I I typically like to um just uh put that um, you know, substantial changes as far as text-wise to have that and brought, bring it back later so that the public has more time to see what's being put forth.
Well, I'm willing to withdraw my motion.
Okay. Um, you could include it in your motion to direct me to bring it back with those uh changes.
All right. I will then modify my motion. Uh, for, again, uh pass uh approval of Resolution seventy-four zero four with direction to the city attorney to identify the uh use of the proceeds of the sale of the land and the specific wording on deed restriction uh to be returned at?
The March twenty-second.
The March twenty-second council meeting. Do you wish to renew your second for that? I'll second.
He he seconded.
All right, we have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We'll move then to item C, Resolution seventy-four zero five. Madam City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Again, Resolution seventy-four oh five. Uh, this is a question um modeled after a question that was approved of in twenty thirteen. Uh, this question would ask registered voters whether the city should spend up to five hundred thousand dollars annually for the next eight years from capital improvement, from the capital improvement fund for city utility infrastructure needs as those funds become available. Um, this would, again, place that question on the ballot for the uh twenty twenty-two general election.
Thank you. Uh, this is one that I had suggested uh previously. Yeah, there was um discussion about whether uh the utility fund being an enterprise fund. Uh, there was some information that's been made available to the public as well as to us here on the dais regarding a statement from the taxation department. Uh, something that I found, uh, I believe is, you know, on point is in the NRS three fifty-four dot five seventeen where it defines an enterprise fund. Uh, item two under that section is "for which the governing body has decided that a periodic determination of revenues earned, expenses incurred, and net income is consistent with public policy and is appropriate for capital maintenance, management control, accountability, or other purposes." Also, there was a footnote uh within that letter from the taxation department that talks about uh the ability of city governments to use general obligation bond, bonds that would fund things within an enterprise fund. Uh, and those general obligation bonds would then be paid for with tax revenues. So I believe it's clear, uh, you know, I know in previous years with our uh comprehensive annual financial report, I've never seen any concern raised by the outside auditors regarding how this money is being put into or being used for utility infrastructure. I think the law is there for making sure that enterprise funds don't have revenue taken out. Uh, but it's pretty clear from the statement from the tax department uh that these funds can be supplemented with other revenue. It it's certainly not prohibited and it makes clear that city governments have the ability to make those public policy decisions uh based on their particular situation. For Boulder City, we are what's called a pay-go city where we pay as we go uh or we must get approval from the voters to go into debt. Um, I believe that the lease revenue we get each year gives us the ability to function as a city to do that. And by directing this money that's been directed for the past seven years for another eight years uh is a public policy decision the city government can make and will benefit uh our city residents. So if there are any other questions, Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I have a question about that and it's um taking an an opposite perspective. I'm, understand that with the rate study and what we've been doing is attempting to have a rate structure such that our enterprise fund is self-sustaining, that it covers not only the cost of 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 goods, of services provided, but the maintenance of the infrastructure. And that by moving these funds uh into our capital improvement plan funds for the utilities, it's saying we're not accurately implementing our rate structure, that that we're adding to it. And that uh the funds that come into the city from our um, from the solar revenues and so on uh could go towards capital improvements for the city as as they should um as opposed to um sort of not allowing our uh our our utilities to be self-sufficient. I I I guess that's my biggest concern about it because if we're having that discussion, you know, then are we accurately uh looking at the kind of rates we're we're charging for our utilities so that we can meet that? Um, I also read that line about the general act obligation backing and it seems a little bit more complicated than that, that it would um, it it should be used for a lower interest rate and that's not what this would be used for. This is simply used to uh take some of the money out of bucket A and move it into bucket B, but doing it in a way that um we probably shouldn't be, but we've been doing that and it seems like a good idea. So I I have a problem with that. I mean, I I certainly see that we're, it's about asking the public if they want to do that, but I do have concerns about mixing the two.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Thank you. Um, I also have similar concerns in that I know that we recently gave a rate reduction, which is fantastic, but I would hate for it to be an artificially induced rate reduction where we actually took five hundred thousand and put it into it where it didn't reflect accurately that our enterprise fund is acting as it should be, which is self-sustaining, where we're able to do that. I could see where um years ago we asked for that. We didn't have the ability or the funds built up. But with ARPA coming down the line with um, which could possibly open up some of those revenues with um, it's really supposed to be a self-sustaining uh revenue source for our our residents. I too question putting that kind of money in or the need for that at this time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I guess to clarify, since it's been brought up, the Raftella Study, um, this annual um uh injection of five hundred thousand dollars was not part of that of that rate study, right? Thinking for it since it is ending?
Correct. It was just planned to the end date in the model.
So our rate structure is based off of a model that is self-sufficient, correct?
That's correct.
So the way I look at it is I have heard two arguments, uh, I have heard arguments for why uh this should be uh on the ballot and not reasons for why it shouldn't or reasons why this should pass, reasons why it shouldn't. I think ultimately that's what we are here to do is to ask the voters. In the end, this is their money. This should be, um, you know, they should have some say in how should we move forward? This might be a way in which they see, um, you know, if they see it as a way to try and keep their rates lower, I don't think that's that's necessarily true, but for them, it might be an actuality of how money is spent that they receive the benefit, you know? I think in the end, what's important for us is that it is made clear to them uh what we are talking about on the ballot question and that they ultimately have the say in how they want to see their money being spent. So for me, I I don't see the harm being that we we are allowed to do it this way, um, that it is something that is available. If the residents feel that it is inappropriate, they will let us know. And I think that would be fine and dandy because our rate study is based off of uh uh not having that in place. And if it isn't, if the right payers or the taxpayers do want to see the voters say, uh, we do want to see that that money going into our uh utilities, then the capital improvement needs for utilities. I don't see the problem with with allowing them to say so either.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Fox?
Yeah, just, so I'm not repeating anything. Uh, I agree with uh Councilmembers Bridges and Jorgensen.
Um, you know, one, I I think it's a mischaracterization of the law um that the enterprise, the utility fund is required to be uh self-sustaining because I think the law makes it very clear that there are other sources of revenue that can be used especially for infrastructure needs. Um, I, you know, the specific examples that were given by the state taxation department uh was general obligation bonds, which just means that you go out, raise some money, put a tax on the residents to pay for uh those bonds over time. Um, I I did not read anything in there that says that if you have available revenue that you can't use that uh for those infrastructure needs that within the uh utility fund. Additionally, the wording of the ballot question is that the transfer would be up to five hundred thousand, which is voted on annually within the city budget by this city council. Um, I think it's idiocy to tell our residents that we get all of this additional revenue coming in from these land leases and we're not going to use that to try and keep our utility rates uh as low as we possibly can. And as far as the rate increase goes, I think Councilmember Adams brought that out. Um, the rate study that was done, which recommended a decrease in the rates, anticipated that this would end uh this year as scheduled. Uh, when we look at an item on our consent agenda earlier this evening, that was to boost uh the cost of a project within the utility fund uh from, uh, well, one point three million dollars because the project had been underestimated. So that's an example of where we have uh projects within that utility fund that are coming out far above what the original estimates are. You know, I I don't understand the unwillingness of people to say we're not going to use this land lease money that really no other community in the state of Nevada has coming in at the levels that we have it coming in at to benefit our residents. Somehow, there seems to be some great need within the general fund that says, oh, no, we're desperate for cash, uh, when the fact is we're not. So a- again, I I think it's fairly clear on this question that the purpose of this is uh setting a public policy that will benefit our residents. Anyone else? Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I I just, I'm, I'm not sure how many people really uh truly understand what our enterprise funds are and what the requirements and regulations about them are. And I think if we're looking at increased costs, and I I look at this uh budget discussion we had the other day, um, that if we're looking at increased costs for capital improvements in our utilities, then we take a look at, you know, whether our rates are right, whether our, you know, are we evaluating projects that maybe need to to wait? Or are we uh taking into consideration that we're going to receive uh federal government funding for that? That, you know, all along that the idea is we receive the revenues from our leases that go into the general fund and that go into our capital improvement plan. And that I I feel very strongly that our utilities funds should be kept separately and that the funding for those projects should be looked at as a function of of what our rates are, what our uh, whether our fund balances are correct and what projects we're funding. So then.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yeah, I I agree with Councilwoman Bridges. Also, just wanted to point out that um we have the lowest taxes in the state. So I do believe that our lease revenues are going towards benefiting our community at large and that we have wonderful services here and we have um, we have ways that we need to spend our money coming up uh with inflation, with the possible change in in um rates for this job situation. We also looked at Diane Pelletier brought her analysis for us. We we were not well over the amount of money that we needed. We were within a margin of eight hundred thousand and I know that she is estimating high, low, or whatever. But five hundred thousand does make a difference and and I don't believe that we're taking money from our solar revenues and and um cheating the public at large. I think actually we've provided a lot that this community would not have if we did not have those. And so um i- in that explanation, I guess I'd have to disagree.
Anyone else? Councilmember Adams?
I'll just add that I think the voters here are are very uh very smart, very intelligent and have the capability to make the decision for themselves how they want to see their money spent.
And I would add too, I I mentioned it before. Um, what this question is, is for the city council to have the ability each year to approve up to five hundred thousand dollars in lease revenue uh to go towards utility infrastructure. If there was some desperate need, um, then it it's simply a decision of the council uh not to make that uh contribution from the lease revenue. Anyone else? Okay, I'm going to uh go ahead and move for approval then on Resolution seventy-four oh five. I believe the wording that is in there i- is reflective of what was there prior so that further direction to Madam City Attorney is not required. Madam City Attorney, do you agree with that? All right, then I will, I will move for approval of Resolution seventy-four oh five. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
We have a motion fails. Two in favor, three opposed. That brings us to Section D, 7406. Madam City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. More discussion and direction is needed on Resolution 7406. On February 8, the City Council directed myself to draft a ballot question addressing the parking of oversized vehicles such as boats, trailers, and recreational vehicles on residential streets in Boulder City. I did some research on this, and we have two applicable laws. One is a Boulder City ordinance that generally prohibits parking on our streets longer than 24 hours, except in an area contiguous to a person's residence. And then there's also a state law that prohibits the purpose of parking a vehicle for storage longer than 72 hours. Nevada is a Dillon Rule state, and this means that local government is restricted in the policies that it can enact, in that it cannot enact policy if the state has already enacted a law that addresses the issue. It's what's known as preemption. And so in this circumstance, because we have a state statute that prohibits parking of vehicles for the purposes of storage longer than 72 hours, the city of Boulder City would not be able to permit individuals to park their RVs or trailers, et cetera, on residential streets for longer than 72 hours. That said, it's a well-known issue that many residents do park their oversized vehicles in front of their residents, because there are not places to store the vehicles within city limits. So I would request, if there's, you know, additional direction the City Council will provide me at this time, however, the form in which I was directed to write the question, I don't think is is possible.
Councilmember Jorgensen, I believe you had brought this issue up previously?
Yes, and with further discussion with Brittany and looking at it, just as you said, with the state rule, I mean, that is what we're beholden to. I know that when this moves from a criminal to a civil offense, that then this will be more maybe enforceable, if that's what you want to say. So I really think it's not that we go and ask, because in that circumstance, there's already rules.
Exactly, yes. What, you know, the traffic violations are criminal in nature right now, which is a barrier to enforcement, in that we have to prove that the statute is violated beyond a reasonable doubt. So the standard of proof for such a violation is very high. Whereas, once these are converted to civil, which will happen automatically at the beginning of next year, the violation, the city need only prove that by a preponderance of the evidence, which is more likely than not a violation, has occurred. And so it would be a much easier issue to police and enforce this prohibition. You know, that said, you know, people, so this will affect or impact the parking of oversized vehicles on residential streets beginning next year.
I would just think with the additional information that we don't need to put this on the ballot. I don't know what everyone else is thinking.
Anyone else? Councilmember Adams?
Yeah, and I guess I'll just add to the point that it would, I think it would be inappropriate for us to put a ballot question out there, an advisory question, as it may be, only to say, it doesn't really matter what you think, because we're told otherwise. I just don't think it's quite fair to the to the residents in that hand. I do think it is a concern here in town, since we are a recreation town, so I hope that it's something that we can discuss and tackle someday sooner rather than later, but this doesn't seem to be an appropriate way to do so.
Anyone else? The question I had when reviewing the materials that we were given, what defines these vehicles? I mean, it seems to be the concern is the oversized vehicles. So what separates that from a passenger car or a pickup truck to something else?
Well, for purposes of the statute, the statute applies to all vehicles.
So we're talking about even if someone parks their passenger car in front of their resident?
Yes, for purposes of storage. So if a person parks their daily car, like parks daily in front of their residents, that wouldn't be for purposes of storage.
Well, I think the, the way the state law is written, it's 72 hours.
That's right.
So it's not whether the intent is to store it, it's whether it's there for more than 72 hours.
Well, no, it says for the purpose of storage. There's also, there's several purposes that are, so you can't park a vehicle on a highway for the principal purpose of displaying the vehicle for sale, washing the vehicle, greasing or repairing the vehicle, soliciting business, selling merchandise from the vehicle, and storage or junkage or dead storage. And the storage specifically is limited to 72 hours. So it is for the purpose of storage.
Well, again, I guess the question comes up then, if the person says, well, I don't intend to store it there. I just happened to have it parked there for a week because I was out of town.
Again, and that's why there's been a barrier to enforcement, because the standard is beyond a reasonable doubt. Now, the standard is going to be preponderance of the evidence. And so it's, the city need only prove that more likely than not, the person parked the vehicle for purposes of storage.
That seems to be, reading people's minds is always difficult.
The statute is written to have an intent element. It's, so that is how it's written.
Okay, so just for clarification then, there is no distinction among types of vehicles that this would apply to, that the current state law applies to?
That is correct.
Okay. Because I know that Clark County recently passed an ordinance regarding large semi-trailer trucks not being allowed on residential streets. And that was at any time. In other words, you could not park that type of vehicle on a residential street.
Yes, the city can always be more restrictive than state law. We just can't be less restrictive. So we could prohibit, we could do a similar prohibition.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Anyone wishing to make a motion on Resolution 7406? Moving on to Item E. Nothing specific on this, but apparently, Councilmember Adams, you had requested this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. At the time, I was considering two questions to consider here. I have decided not to move forward with those, but obviously, in order to have the discussions, these things have to be put on our agenda. So at this time, I don't, but we are up against timelines, obviously, so I wanted to make sure that we did have the opportunity to consider any other questions that we may have at this time.
Thank you. And since it is on the agenda, is there anyone else that wishes to discuss any additional ballot questions? Then we will probably have the exact same discussion for Section F?
With regards to that, I do see that we have something before us regarding a potential ballot question. If, it's a memorandum from the Community Development Department, so I guess if Mr. Mays would like to address this?
Good evening again. So, Councilmember Adams, you're correct. On the dais with copies at the back of the room for the public is a memo dated today regarding 1030 Industrial Road. So the council may recall that last year, as part of the 2021 land management process, Mr. Floyd had requested consideration of the potential future sale of 1030 Industrial Road. It's approximately 1.5 acres. He's an adjacent property owner and was interested in use of the property for light warehousing and caretaker residence uses. He's requested council consideration of a ballot question to ask the voters of our community whether they would be willing to sell this 1.5 acres. And so the purpose for consideration tonight is if the council wants to give staff direction regarding preparing that ballot question, we would bring it back for council consideration.
Thank you. Questions or comments regarding this?
I guess my comment, Mayor, would just be that, you know, since this is, you know, coming in at the last minute, I don't, I'm not opposed to, I don't ever want to direct staff to do something that we're not wanting to move forward with, but I don't oppose at least directing to form the question, give us a little bit more time to review this, you know, specifically, and then when it comes back to us, deciding whether or not it would be put on. That's my personal thoughts on it, but unless there are other thoughts, that's where my head is at at this time.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Adams, do you wish to make a motion then regarding that?
Sure. I will move to direct that we, Madam City Attorney, formulate a question with regards to the sale of approximately 1.5 acres of land located at 1030 Industrial Road.
Second.
Is that sufficient, Madam City Attorney?
Yes, ma'am.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, Mr. Mays. Section G, Discussion Impossible Staff Directive Regarding the Need for Advertising for Charter Commission Members. I don't believe we've had any items come up that would trigger a charter amendment. So that item, we can move on from to Item Number Six, City Manager's Report.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Tonight, we have the City Manager's Report, Item A, Claims Paid for January. There is nothing of note there, but in Item B, the Financial Report, if you and the public take your attention to page 25 of the Financial Report, that's on page 249 of the packet. We are now tracking the ARPA funds, American Rescue Plan Act funds, and that shows the amount that's obligated versus the amount that's spent and the amount that's still available. So I'm here for any questions.
Questions or comments? Thank you for adding that. We've got more than $21 million over the next couple of years that need to be tracked, and that's a good way to do it.
I'm looking forward to the workshop tomorrow to discuss more.
There we go. Thank you. Item Number Seven is our final public comment period. Comment during this period may be on any issue. Speakers will have up to five minutes to speak. As always, we ask that you be civil and concise in your comments. Public comment may have been submitted via email prior to the meeting, and we will also have the phones available after we see if there's anyone in chambers that would like to speak. Anyone for the final public comment period? Please, please come to the microphone and state your name.
Hi, good evening. My name is Elaine Alessandra Kraus. I'm a resident here in Boulder City. I've been here the last few meetings to talk about the leash law. I know that's not on the agenda today, and probably the appropriate time to have made this comment would have been after the last city council meeting, but I feel like I needed time to gather my thoughts, and the energy in the room was, as Ann called it, passionate. So I chose to hold off for another day. First of all, I want to thank the members of the council that voted to move forward with the leash law, because I do think it is sorely, sorely needed. I didn't feel comfortable commenting last week. The first meeting I went to, there was a break, and one of the opposing persons on the opposing opinion of mine basically said if she ever, if her off-leash dog ever ran up to my on-leash dog and my dog were to become aggressive, she would shoot my dog. And my first thought was, your off-leash dog shouldn't be running up to my on-leash dog if he's under voice control. Last council meeting, I'm giving my public comment and I'm being interrupted. So my point being, this is supposed to be a civil meeting. And what I heard from our chief of police and from Ann in animal control is when they respond to an off-leash call, they send two officers with body cameras. Ann is an extension of the police department. She comes in uniform and should get the respect of that office, and she does not. I am a single person out there walking my dog, and I will say, call your dog, please call your dog. I don't want your dog near my dog. And I'm told to F off. My dog's been bit. My dog's been attacked. I've had to tell my child to run. Sorry, to keep her safe. And then my child to see my dog and myself bloody from another dog, and the person saying, sorry, and taking off. So I've had many interactions. I've heard the word, the good people and the good dogs. I'm the good people. My dog is on a leash. My dog is well-trained. He is a canine good citizen. I have sworn the owner's pledge to the American Kennel Club about my responsibilities to responsible dog ownership. He has passed a temperament test. I am a law-abiding citizen. I'm the good people. So the people that are off, and what I know about my dog is well-trained as he is, he's a dog. I call him my baby, my son, my boy. He is a dog. He has instincts and drives. I can't guarantee you, he's not going to chase a bunny, a bird, a horse, another dog that he wants to play with. I can't guarantee that. Nobody can. The best trained dogs, seeing eye dogs, on a leash. Service dogs, on a leash. We had an agility event, great trained dogs, on a leash until they are competing. So the best trained dogs are on a leash. The folks that want to let their dogs off-leash had the opportunity to use the park, to use the baseball diamond, and couldn't police the amount of dog feces. And yet, we're supposed to expect them to be responsible enough to keep their dogs in verbal control. They don't. They can't. A dog is a dog. I understand that we want to give people, I don't understand. The bottom line is my safety and the safety of this community is more important and should be a right, and more important than somebody's need to exercise their dog and their desire to play fetch. Period. What we heard from law enforcement and animal control last week was there's 700 off-leash dogs-at-large calls, 70 of them in the parks. Many animals are hurt, people are hurt. And just because the city has never been sued, doesn't mean we won't be. Doesn't mean we won't be. I lived in San Francisco in 2001. You remember the Whipple case? Two dogs killed somebody. The owners of those dogs are still in prison. Dogs are, it can be a weapon. I can't, I mean, I just can't say enough. 66% of all dog bites are dogs off-leash. So of every, 66%, the dog is off-leash. 11% are unknown and 22% are on-leash. The majority of dog bites that happen outside of the home are dogs at large, dogs off-leash. Solutions. Let's talk solutions. We talk about the cares money. A lot of that money can be used for parks and recreation. Put in a dog park. The, I talked to Sandra, who does the nonprofit dog park. 150 people use that dog park on a regular basis. Two to four people show up at their volunteer events. I felt horrible for her. I mean, folks use that park, they don't clean it up, and then folks are badmouthing the park because there's no lawn. Donate your money. There's no irrigation. Donate your time. Make it usable for everyone. But I shouldn't have to be afraid to walk my dog. I live two doors down from the park. We bought our house because of the proximity to the park. You know, make one of the parks, Bicentennial Park, I think a lot of people go to Wilbur Park, designate that as the dog park. And the rest of them, leash your dog, six-foot leash, not retractable, a six-foot flat leash. If you've never had your dog attacked, if you've never had to tell your child to run, you cannot you cannot understand how terrifying it is. We also talked last time, two ADA-protected classes, PTSD, and there was a person that wrote in about using an assistive device. I don't remember if it was a wheelchair or walker. These people, all of us, should be safe in our community, and we're not protecting the Americans with disabilities. So again, if we can use that money from cares to put in a dog park, but the bottom line is, I am owed safety. This community is owed safety. Nobody is owed a place to play fetch with their dog. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in chambers wishing to speak?
Again, Neil Sineikin, I sympathize with her position. It's a very difficult balance of people wanting their dogs to be free versus any risk to the public, and it's a tough thing for the council to look at. I also wanted to say that I appreciate all of you for dedicating so much time. I know what it takes even to read the package, let alone go to the committee meetings and all the rest of the things, and dedicate your private life to this. I get to pick and choose when and where I come here, and I like what you've done to the room. And the things I wanted to talk about, I appreciate your point. It was very astute, and I didn't get a good, I didn't get an answer that I was looking for with respect to the sale of the property, and it's your choice to go ahead with this, not mine. When you sell that, and there's nothing in the ballot question, if I heard correctly about it being restricted, then it seems to me, and I'm not an attorney, that a future council could change the use and take out the grocery store restriction, and it seems to me they could do whatever they want with it, and I hope there's more research into it. If you do sell it with a deed restriction, the developer can't change it. Once it's sold, it's in the deed, and he can't come back unless the council agrees to do it. That was a big problem when Thrifty was there in the Vaughn Center, when somebody tried to put in a pharmacy, and then there was a deed restriction, it turned into a big battle. But I'm concerned that the way we're talking about this, if I heard correctly, and I'll need to replay the tape when I get home, a council in the future, it seems to me, if this doesn't sell, could decide to do whatever they want with it. And if there is a deed restriction and it is sold, the council could come back and say, we sell it unless it's in the ballot question. So I would ask that the city attorney, either, you know, we could discuss it, or she could check again, but I hope it's further clarified, and I appreciate the astuteness of your bringing it up, and I'd hoped that you might have delved deeper into it. I came here to talk about this 36 acres and express my concern as someone with 35 years in shopping center development. I don't want to see two markets go in with 25,000 people or 15,000 people and put one of the others out of business, as we've seen. And I don't think the examples that were cited about the shopping centers in Las Vegas really apply here. And if you have eight acres at Vaughn's and 16, another 10 at Albertson's, and you double that and double the retail and double the market, and you look at shrinkage of people buying on Amazon and going to markets in the city, and you're growing at 500 people a year, and you don't try to break the growth control with Randy Shams trying to sell 16,000, 1600 ounces around the growth control, or there are other attacks? I don't see how that's going to make sense, but that's my opinion, and that's your choice. Now, I did ask the city clerk, because I came here specifically for this item. The title is ambiguous. There's nothing in the package. I can't tell where it is. Like you, I didn't know the shape of it or anything. You weren't given a map, nor was I. And she directed me to go to the back and look at these documents. This is what's back there. There's nothing about the 36 acres, and so all I have to go with is what the, what the agenda says. And I deem it vague and ambiguous because I couldn't figure out what you're talking about. The other point is, I don't know that you can approve what you did regarding the last item on the sale of that property without it being on the agenda. I would have to go back and listen to the tape and look at it, and, you know, I have concern. There's the Nevada Open Meeting Law 241, and I, as I say, I will go back and watch the tape. In 2017, the resumes of Stephen Morris were withheld by the city clerk and the then-deputy city clerk against 241, and I and several people filed open meeting law complaints that were upheld by the attorney general. I'm not a novice, and I'm not saying I'm going to file, but I say that I have concern when I'm told that material is in the back and there isn't, and this agenda is written with no direction about what it is. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else present that would like to speak? Yes, sir. Please come forward and state your name.
Mayor McManus, my name is Junior Kraus. I'm the husband of Elaine. City council, I'm, I had the privilege of being here the last meeting and this meeting. I came here last meeting because my wife showed some concern because she was threatened the week previous, that she had come to that meeting six weeks ago, or four weeks ago. So I wanted to show up just to see what was going on and see how it was progressing. I witnessed the meeting and some of the reactions of some of the folks, my wife, one of them. She's very emotional. I try to be more pragmatic, and sometimes that works, but when I heard the officers, I listened to all the arguments, pro and against. I was one of the individuals that was very pro, let your dog run off-leash for a long time, and then we had three incidents, and it made me understand that I have a responsibility, not only to myself, my family, but my animal and other animals, to keep them safe. So I had to come back on that opinion. We had been several years and had never had an incident, and all of a sudden, we had two or three in a row. And when we call animal control and they say, you live in the Bermuda Triangle of unleashed animals, that gave me concern. 700 incidents in one year, 58 per month, 12 people injured in 18 months, four animals killed in two years. What's it take to act? What number is it going to take to act? For those of you who say you've never seen it, your head is in the sand, or you're not taking the time to visualize. Mr. Adams said that your head is in the sand if you do not act. I understand if you've never seen it, but talk to a police officer. Find out if somebody's been injured, and take the time to go speak to those people or call them. I know your time is valuable. Go see the animals that have been injured, and that's the animals that were leashed or not leashed that got injured. It affects both of them. We had an incident on Royal Burke Dale. I won't give you the specific address, but the owner had their dog off-leash. They attacked my two dogs. My two dogs are on leash. Their dog came to mine. My dog reacted. He attacked my dogs with a broom. So, found that amusing. Broadmoor Circle, one of your city employees had his dog come out and go after our dog. Our dog is dog reactive. It was about three or four years ago. His dog was injured, $1,000 worth of damage, and we thank goodness that our dog did not shake him or anything. He just bit down on him. But he came to my house about three hours later and threatened, well, I wouldn't say it was a threat, but he said, you will pay me $1,000 or I'll call the animal control and have your dog put down. So a lot of it is people not educated into the law and how it reads. I did not know until I came here and talked to the animal control officer. So, canine-good citizen, we have a contract that we have to sign when we put our dogs through canine-good citizen course. We will be responsible for our dog's health needs. I'm going to paraphrase here and keep it short. I knew your time is valuable. Check for vaccine, proper diet, daily exercise. I will be responsible for my dog's safety, not run loose, use leash in public, and has some form of ID to include microchip. I will not allow my dog to infringe on the rights of others, not to run loose in a neighborhood, be a nuisance barking in a neighborhood. I will pick up my dog's waste in public parks, hotels, sidewalks, to include wilderness, hiking trails, and campgrounds. I am responsible for my dog's quality of life, basic, simple, animal training, and attention and playtime, and a dog is a commitment to time and caring. With that, I yield the rest of my time. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Well, I think that's everyone in chambers now, so we will go to any callers that would like to call for the final public comment period. This is the final public comment period for a city council meeting. Anyone wishing to call in? Madam City Clerk, were there any emails received for the final public comment?
No written comments were received.
All right, hearing no others, we will close the final public comment period then and move to our last item, council reports. Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I'll just, I just want to offer my condolences to Sandy Nelson and his family. Of course, for those who know, legendary drummer Sandy Nelson did pass on February 14th. I did consider him a good friend, and so I'm just offering my condolences again to him and his family.
Thank you. Councilmember Fox?
I'll do the same, send my condolences to Sandy, and, yeah, he was a regular at the restaurant, and he was a very good man.
Thank you. Councilmember Jorgensen? Councilmember Bridges?
Yes, I have three items. First of all, as usual, emergency aid. Boulder City has assistance available to residents in need of help with rent or utilities or participation in our food bank, and they prefer that you call and make an appointment. And secondly, there was a meeting of the SN, Southern Nevada Regional Planning Coalition, and slowly by surely, slowly but surely, responsibilities of the SNRPC are being handed over to the RTC with the intention that in 2023, its demise will be taken to the legislative session. And thirdly, we did receive a Nevada 2021 population estimate, and for those who are interested, the estimate is 15,250 people in Boulder City, of whom 9,335 live in single-family homes, so just a piece of, and the next one is mobile homes, about 2,300. So that's all I have today, and also, I, for sure, Sandy Nelson will be missed, his character. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I'd also like to give my condolences for Sandy. You know, I helped him move a couple times. He was a unique person here in Boulder City. He even got to view his pirate radio station in the tunnels in his backyard. I do want to thank city staff for their work on the State of the City event last week. Very much appreciate all the effort that went into that. As we've noticed, nobody's wearing masks this evening. However, that doesn't mean COVID has suddenly disappeared, so if you've not been vaccinated, please talk to a healthcare professional. I really don't want to see this come back. We need to get as far away from it as we possibly can. And the Super Bowl weekend, a couple weekends ago, big success for Las Vegas, so that's another reason to put this pandemic as far behind us as we can. With that, I want to thank you all, and we'll return.